We are now recording.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the July 28, 2020, regular board meeting of the Methacton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. Given the need to conduct this school board meeting in a virtual environment, the Board of Directors required members of the public wanting to make comments on agenda items or courtesy of the floor to pre-register by 5 o'clock this evening. By way of attendance, we're going to do a roll call vote. Ms. Cancro?
Here.
Ms. Drummond?
I am here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. McGinnis?
Here.
Mr. Neverett?
Here.
Ms. Purdue?
Here.
Ms. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Winters?
Here.
Okay, and of course, Ms. Aubrey Larson, me too. I am here. Recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Before we do that, if I could just make one announcement, the Property Committee of the Board met in a virtual executive session on July 28, 2020, with the purposes of consulting with the solicitor and the district's construction advisors regarding information and strategy in connection with a potential breach of contract claim involving an active construction project. In terms of guests and scheduled speakers, we have a number of items before the board in terms of consideration this evening, and I would just want to talk about a few of those. But most importantly, and maybe one of the most exciting things that we have on the agenda, which is a good news item, we have Mr. Jim Bean and Nikki Kralovich from the Education Foundation, who are here to present a check. So I'm going to ask Jim and Nikki to do just that.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. The Methacton Education Foundation would like to present the Methacton School District with a check for $8,000 for the Methacton Backpack Program. Thanks to the generous donors of the Methacton COVID Relief Fund, we are able to make another contribution to the Methacton Backpack Program for summer meal distributions to the most vulnerable Methacton students. During this crisis, hundreds of students lost access to critical meals funded by federal programs. It's truly humbling to see our community come together, supporting one another during these hard times. Thanks to everyone in our community who helped donate to make this and other contributions possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kralovich. Thank you, Mr. Bean, for your support and your continuous efforts in helping the students, staff, and community of the Methacton School District. In terms of other business, we have on the agenda the reopening of Methacton Schools plans. There are actually three plans on the agenda. One is the Driver Education Program. That plan was presented last week, and there are no changes to that plan as it was presented then. So I'm certain that unless the board members have questions on that, we'll just move on to the next one. Is the Athletics and Activities Plan. Dr. Speewack presented that, and there was a recommendation from the member of the board to allow for spectators so that we, instead of denying spectators as our original plan had listed, that we would allow for the limitations under the rule of either 250 in an outdoor setting or half of the capacity. So with that said, we made the changes in the document, and we have that before you this evening for consideration. Again, if you approve the Driver Education Program, we will start that program on August 3 with on-the-road instruction, given the health and safety matters that are outlined in that program. Athletics and Activities will begin August 10, if it's football, or August 17 for all other fall sports. And before I go on to the next one, are there any questions from members of the board regarding the Driver Education or Athletics and Activities Program? And again, for those board members that I can't see, you know, you just need to unmute yourself and state whether or not you have a question. So I do apologize. Seeing that there's no questions at this time from members of the board, I'll go on to the reopening of Methacton Schools Health and Safety Plan. And I'd like to present that on the screen to talk about some of the changes that have occurred based on feedback that we had from the board, feedback that we had from the public in our focus group sessions last week, and make sure that, you know, this reflects not only the best practices as recommended by a number of health organizations, but sits well with the board in terms of providing, to the best of our ability, the health and safety matters going forward if we bring students back onto campus. So let me just share that presentation with you. So this plan is as of 7/28/2020. There is an option here that we will index this plan so that it's searchable on the internet and for different sections. So there will be a table of contents added if approved. And this whole plan will, in its entirety, and index will be provided on the Methacton website as required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Please know that the components in this plan are based on the template that was provided by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And some of the major changes from our last presentation, I'll go over those with you this evening. So it's important to recognize that we cleaned up the document to a degree to make it more manageable and more focused. But one of the major items that changed from our last presentation to a draft that was released, I believe, over the weekend or possibly Friday of this past week, was that students and staff are required to wear a face mask at all times. So prior to those recommendations from the board and from the public, there were a number of other considerations in terms of face coverings. Face masks are now the school rule, we'll call it, for moving forward. And it includes the places and when students and staff are required to wear a mask. It also outlines where students and staff are permitted to remove their mask. It does talk about a number of other matters associated with that, and these are things that are not new in the plan, but I'll scroll down to some of the other additions. We've added some information in terms of the proper wearing of masks. We've added some information in terms of, bear with me, the the use of a mask and having breaks throughout the day. So our principals and our teachers, so long as it complies with the distancing and safe means, teachers will coordinate, you know, mask breaks throughout the day. I think this is, you know, important, certainly important for the, for everyone that is obviously wearing a mask. In terms of distancing, we've updated a number of things, but some of those things more specifically are based on seating in every classroom, will be, there'll be assigned seating, there'll certainly be assigned seating in the cafeterias. The music department will further, and has already sent me and has further developed and communicated additional health and safety protocols based on some of their vocal and other types of classes. So I think it's fair to say that every precaution that can possibly be considered may not necessarily be in this particular plan in terms of all the details. However, I believe that the plan addresses most of the high-level matters that will require our principals and teachers to come up with routines and ways of doing these things appropriately and in an educational fashion that becomes a routine throughout the day. We've added links to the different classroom configurations that families can take a look at to see how classrooms will be set up. We described that previously in rows and columns, but we allowed for those visuals to be available for folks. We talked a little bit, we made some changes down to the bottom for food services. Basically, if the district does go into yellow phase, all lunches will be distributed to students in classrooms. That's at all levels, not just at the current plan in the green phase for K through 5. Elementary principals will also organize procedures to best ensure the safety and health of students and assisting adults during the classroom lunch period. So there has to be a routine, you know. You know, if the food's delivered to the classroom, you know, and a child needs assistance with opening up, let's say, a prepackaged sandwich or a prepackaged piece of food, we certainly want to make sure that we protect not only our students but our staff, and we'll come up with the routines necessary to ensure that the masks remain on, that all packages are open by the staff before they, or that mask are put on when it's time to, you know, assist a child. So there's a number of those routines that have to be put in place. In terms of the building cafeteria diagrams for both the, for the high school, for a corner on the Skyview, those diagrams are listed there. I think they were updated recently as of today to include Xs on some of the seats so that the parents can see the example of where students would sit. So on a 12-foot table, rectangular table, we would be able to fit four students, distance at six feet apart, and staggered on the table as well. In terms of transportation, we updated the information related to what the drivers would wear. So I believe at one point, the drivers were able to wear a face shield, but consistent with the other rule that we talked about in terms of face mask, we updated that. We put in the graphic of what it would look like for students loading the bus. We basically are saying that it would be not more than two students per bus. Changes had occurred. There were some changes under symptoms, which, let me just get to that. So we tried to provide a better indication of what contact tracing might look like. This may not be exactly what happens on every case basis, but based on the information we have now, this is really a fair example. And it talks about, you know, the students in a classroom and how students in front of them, and of a student that is tested positive with COVID, the contact tracing would take us back to our assigned seats, would take us back to looking and tracing where that child has been throughout the day, et cetera. And it's really a matter of six feet and the 15-minute rule, we'll call it, as a general understanding of what families would actually get called on these particular matters. So as an example, in the one that we presented here, if we were to, we would probably, we'd be calling or at least giving information to the County Department of Health of the students that were in proximity on the bus to the child and the students that were in proximity to the child in the classroom in the lunchroom or another spots throughout the district, throughout the building. And then the County Department of Health would work with us and get the specifics, you know. Were they six feet apart? Were they, you know, in their proximity for more than 15 minutes? And all that information would be checked to determine which students, which family would be called and be notified to potentially have to quarantine or isolate. So in a classroom of, say, 20, it doesn't necessarily mean that one child who comes out with COVID-19 test presumptive positive means that the entire class has to quarantine or be isolated. Trying to think of some of the other changes that had occurred. Again, this is a pretty large, certainly a large document, a lot of information in it. I'm going to get down here to the professional development. As you can see, there are a number of professional development items that are listed on the plan. And then this kind of gives us into an item that we're going to hopefully consider as I make the recommendation later. But in order to do all these trainings and get certain things done, we're going to need a little bit more time. We're certainly going to need time for our staff, time for our students, and time for our families. So with that said, next on the agenda is my recommendation on having the students' school year start at a different time. And we'll talk about that in just a little bit. But part of the driving factor behind all of that is the amount of information that we need to provide to our staff to safely operate within this health and safety plan. In terms of the pandemic team, these are the folks that, you know, represent different constituents throughout the district. And that pretty much is consistent with the changes that have occurred since the last time that we met with you. So I'll take, any questions on the plan? There's some other things that I do want to go over about this plan with the board, but are there any, are there any questions right now on any of the particulars that are listed inside the plan? Not seeing any hands on that. I'm going to just stop the showing of the screen for a second and talk about some of our concerns as an administrative team in trying to make sure that we can fulfill the obligations and a plan going forward. So I think it's important for the board to recognize that, you know, when we reduce the number of seats, and you can see from the diagrams that, you know, if we have a classroom of 25, we may reduce that down to 20 seats in some of our classrooms. Were we in a classroom of 30, that might be down to 24 or possibly 22. So there's a reduction in the amount of available seats so that we can meet the distance requirements. As such, when we began this conversation back in June, and the feedback that we got initially was that there was, you know, in the neighborhood of 30, 40% of the families in those conversations and those focus groups that were interested in just doing an all online, you know, program. So today, we have some numbers to share with the boards, so you know that. And this is in terms of a non-duplicative fashion, meaning that there are 890 students that have been committed to the online program as of this date. And there are 1,000, there's 1,432 on-premise students that have committed. In the original survey that we put out for online, there were generally about 400 families that were thinking that they were on the fence of possibly going to online. But those aren't right now considered as a commitment. So in terms of commitments, we shared what we have. The challenge going forward for us administratively is knowing that there are some seat reductions. We're going, we rest, and knowing that we have families that generally were looking at between 30 and 40%, if we could meet that 30% threshold for having students do all online, we're going to be better able to make the all-on-premise option work for everyone. If we find ourselves not getting close to that 30% number, it could make providing the on-premise solution very challenging. And what I mean by that is it's not necessarily just a matter of, do we need more space? We actually would need more space and more staff in order to do that altogether. And I think, you know, it's certainly going to be one of those, it's certainly going to be a challenge. So the other thing that I think is important is to really talk about a timeline here. And I just want to pull up a document that I can share with the board. So I hope people can see this, but basically, what I've done here is I've tried to put a timeline together. And this is, and this is assuming that in my next presentation of the change in the calendar, that students' first day is changed from August 31st to September 8th. That we would approve tonight, assuming we approved the Health and Safety Plan, we would send letters of notice to all of the families, and we would use all of our communication means over the next several days to try to communicate with all of our families to ensure that they give us a response as to whether or not they want to do all online or all on-premise. If by the deadline, assuming that we choose September 8 as the first student day, I can reasonably push back all the deadlines for K through 12 commitment to an August 5 date. Originally, as you might recall, we had August, or August 27 originally, and then August 29 as a follow-up date for making that commitment.
What was July, Dr. Zerbi, not August?
Yep, you're right. Thank you for the correction. So with that, we think we can give everybody the option for this last day to choose. We also recognize that families won't necessarily, not everyone will respond. So the assumption is that maybe there will be a language barrier or some other, you know, overwhelming matter that prevents them from responding. So we want to be able to reach out to folks and allow them to give us their commitment either over the phone or direct them to the website and make it easy for them to, you know, make a determination. Here is where I think the board needs to be apprised of the administrative concern. So by August 7, if I still haven't met the target determination, like if I still only have 50 or 60% of the families responding, and I need 30% to offload the on-premise, I'm going to be in a rather uncomfortable challenge. And the assumption is if I can't make that work, I don't think it's the board's will or the public's will to allow me to try to shoehorn students into a process. That certainly is not something I'm interested in doing, and I'm sure you're not either. So my concern is that I wouldn't need to reconvene a special meeting of the board to get additional feedback on what our next step would be. Now, as an example, the next step could be any of the things that you've heard of other school districts doing, all the way up until doing a potential full online program. But if we, if we do, you know, depending on what we decide to do here in August 10, it could put a tremendous amount of stress on us to deliver a good result if if it's something other than online, if we have to make that decision on the 10th. So what we have before you this evening is a health and safety plan for reopening schools that I believe addresses a majority of the health and safety issues, but it also includes in there, and using on the first page, the language associated with opening schools, either by having parents choose to go online or choose to go all on-premise. And if you were to approve the plan as it's presented this evening, that would be the educational direction for which I would proceed down. But knowing that I'm presenting, there could be some challenges somewhere, you know, after the deadline, it could require us to rethink about what our plan is. If an option is similar to having multiple choices, we would have to give parents another opportunity to select a choice. And that could take us well into late August, possibly the third week of August, if not more. So I'm just dreams, you know, straightforward on this with the board to let you know that I, you know, I do think that the all-on-premise and the all-online option that we have before you and we have before the public is the best option. It actually allows for parents to choose between the two, I'll call them ultimate options. Meaning, you know, those families that are hyper concerned about the matters associated with COVID-19, they get to stay home, they get to get an education from the Methacton teachers through the Google Classroom and other synchronous instruction. And those that have less concern about that and/or have a greater need for having on-premise instruction for their child, they have that option. My concern is my ability to, if the numbers don't pan out, my ability to deliver what the board and the public expects. And with that is my biggest concern. Because, you know, there's not a lot of time between August 10 and September 8 to put some, you know, unusual option like a hybrid or something of that in the place. So I wanted to make sure that the board understands, you know, my concerns, and certainly, I'm sure there might be some opportunity for us to discuss those. But as I'm presenting this evening, and before we have the discussion about the plan, it's probably important for me to also, because the plan reflects the change in the schedule, if it's okay with the board president, I'll just talk about the calendar change? Or you want to talk about the plan first and then talk about the calendar change?
I think before the board gets into any discussion of anything, Dr. Zerbi, we need to have a brief recess to discuss something, you and I.
That's fine. So do you want me to present the calendar or do we want to do a recess?
Let's do a recess. So if the members of the board, you can just mute and stop your video, and members of the public, we will be back in just a moment. So if the members of the board, you can just mute and stop your video and members of the public, we will be back in just a moment. Sorry about that, everybody. Members of the board could just pop back in. So as many of you may have realized, we have maxed out our capacity with Zoom this evening at 500 attendees. Our current license for Zoom does not allow us to go higher than that. So based on this fact, I'm going to recommend that we recess this meeting until tomorrow at 7 o'clock. If there are any board members that cannot make it, I see Ms. Perdue is shaking her head, no. So I, I'm going to recommend that we recess if there is a time and, and date that works better than, let's, let's try and figure that out now because I'd rather let people know before we leave this meeting when we are recessing too, if it's at all possible.
Fortunately, I have a class tomorrow and I have a presentation.
Okay. Would you be available for Thursday evening?
That's fine.
Okay. Would that work for the remainder of the board? Okay. So for the members of the public that are on the line right now, we are going to be recessing this meeting until Thursday, July 30th at 7:00 PM. Information on how to join the meeting at that time will be shared in all of the usual channels on the website, possibly on social media. And we will be looking at, at ways that we can increase our capacity for the meeting. So I apologize for the inconvenience. There's nothing more I would like to do than get this moving and, and, you know, get this behind us. But I think it's important that we keep the meeting available to the public. And I know that there is a deadline tomorrow as of right now, know that that deadline is, is not going to be enforced. So parents of high school students, the deadline for, for registering for online versus on-premises is not tomorrow. I know that the board hasn't taken official action on that, but Dr. Zerbi, I guess, I'm, yeah. Yep. So we will, we'll be able to accommodate people registering later. So with that, I'm going to recess this meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.